There are districts now, but they really know how to translate legislative jargon into technicals, but that's not a skill set I have. I've only worked in districts.
Good evening. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to this evening's Tacoma School Board meeting of September 14th. And as always, let us begin with this black salute.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We could please have a roll call?
Yes, President Oshka.
Here.
Vice President Cobb.
Here.
Director Winskill.
Here.
Director Heinz.
Here.
And Director Viall.
Here.
Thank you. Next, I would like to entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda.
I move adoption of the agenda for this evening?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, seeing none, motion passives, five zero. Next on our agenda is item number five, which is recognition of staff, students, and community. Item number five point one is the recognition of two schools named as 2017 avid secondary school-wide sites of distinction, Stewart and Mason Middle Schools. Mr. Vopel.
Thank you, President Oshka and members of the board. You've made a big investment in student achievement by supporting avid advancement via individual determination as an instructional strategy, primarily in our middle schools, but also in some elementary and high schools as well. The avid organization has named two of our middle schools, Stewart and Mason Middle Schools, as school-wide sites of distinction for achieving a high level of positive impact on their students. Here to tell you a bit more and introduce the two school teams is Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning Marie Verhar.
Good evening. It is a great pleasure and honor to be able to share the incredible work of these two middle schools. Just a little bit more about how they received this recognition as a secondary school-wide site of distinction. As Mr. Vopel said, they have shown a high level of commitment from students, staff, and the surrounding community to increase the number of college-ready students. Avid employs process metrics to determine if staff are all appropriately trained, if there is an avid philosophy that prevails school-wide, if high-yield instructional strategies are routinely used in all classrooms, and if the leadership models a firm commitment to decision-making that is informed by avid's impact and level of sustainability. The metric also demonstrates the commitment to provide opportunities that support our students in taking the prerequisite steps for college enrollment, advocating for all students to be college-ready, and promoting depth and breadth of an avid school-wide readiness culture. Tonight, we have members of the Mason Middle School and Stewart Middle School community with us to receive the recognition for their efforts. Principal Patrice Solaski from Mason and Principal Kim Messersmith from Stewart will share briefly with you about what this recognition means for their students and staff.
Marie told me I needed to be short, so I've got a really short presentation because this really isn't about what I do. It's the work lies with my staff, students, and parents in helping change the pathway of our students. But before I get into it, I'd like to publicly say thank you to Marie Verhar for helping us along this journey. She's been very supportive, and we appreciate you, Marie. I would also like to recognize my staff, students, and parents that are here. If you'd please stand. Come on. This year, we're going to become an avid demonstration school, just so you know. That's next steps. We're well on our way there. What I'd like to do now is introduce you to Dolores Keller, who is my avid coordinator, and has, this is her passion, this is her dream. Dolores.
In my, as an educator, this avid program is the most powerful, effective program I have encountered in 38 years of teaching. It allows students to learn, have accountability, determination, integrity, perseverance, and it gives student support to achieve their highest potential, no matter what their obstacles. So it is probably the best program I have ever seen in my career and the best students that have gone through it. Tonight, we have some high school students that are here that will say a few minutes how much that means to them and how it has helped them. So thank you Tacoma School District for allowing us to do the avid program. I hope it's lasting when I retire.
Kyle Williams, former Mason student.
All right. Hello, everyone. My name is Kyle Williams, and I'm a former avid student. And what I can say about this program is that it has impacted me a lot through my experiences in school. I got into this program not really knowing a lot about it. I was very interested about it because I heard that it would boost your chances of getting into college, and that is what it did. But if I could give one example, and I'm going to keep this short, I was always someone who was good at math, and I really wanted to just really do what I was good at. And now I'm in AP pre-calculus, and I'm a sophomore in high school. So I'm doing classes that are two years ahead of what I'm doing. So all I can say is thanks. It's helped me grow some kind of social thing, too, with the family and avid. And, you know, I could never take that for granted. So, thank you.
My name is Jackson Duvendek. I was in the Mason avid program. And as I started avid, I didn't realize how much it was going to affect me. And I am completely thankful for everything Ms. Keller did. I did not know where I was going to go. I didn't know that I, what I wanted to be. And over three years in the avid program, I decided what college I want to go to, what I want to be. And now I know exactly where I need to go. I know what I need to, I know what grades I need to have. I know where, who I need to talk to. And I know all the people. So, yeah. The avid program's amazing, and I hope it stays.
Hello. My name's Jordan Williams. I'm Kyle Williams' little brother. Right now, I'm in avid in eighth grade. And so when I go into avid, I always get this warm feeling like I'm in another, I have another family. And when we go into avid, they'll, they're like, they won't let you fail. So they will do everything to help you out. Like, they have tutors that will help you out anytime. So it's super fun to be in there. You get to learn a lot about college. Super fun. It prepares you for college because you go on field trips for college, and they're like, oh, that's cool. Maybe I'll try going there because, and, and so we take like notes on like what we do, what they do, like what the campus life is like. And we learn a lot about a whole bunch of other stuff. And I just really love, I love avid. So much fun.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Clemmie Williams, and I belong to Jordan and Kyle, and also Jack, and also avid. I belong to everyone. Amazing. As a parent, we strive to have the very, very best for our children. And I will say, you know, just avid and work, the avid program and working with these kids to, you know, to increase their, their abilities to do well on the Common Core, state standards, and things of that nature. It's amazing. And me, as a parent, watching my, as I call them saplings now, you know, grow into these beautiful trees here, you know, and I, 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 me myself, I could not do, get up here and speak to the avid program. I think that I would probably do a pathetic job of trying to express how much I care about this program. But I can speak to it from an agricultural perspective, as in General Sherman. And some of you, I'm sure you know who General Sherman is, but we're not talking about the general and the Union Army. We're talking about the sequoia tree. It is now presently the largest tree on the planet. But I remember growing up as a kid, my mom would always talk about despise not the days of humble beginnings. And as I look at my children over here, and Jack is one of my children also, he's my extended family, he's my son, I see that they are in this avid program. And this, this program is a very, very, give a sapling of some fertile ground, and you cultivate it with, with these amazing teachers and support groups and what have you. These kids has, they have unlimited potential, and they can turn into those big beautiful trees, you know, as we, as, as we watch them go through that journey. So as a parent, this program for me, I have, I actually love just watching my kids just blossom into these beautiful people of tomorrow. So I really do, I have so much, you know, heart for this program. And that lady right there, words cannot say how much I love you and what you poured into these kids. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, and go Mustangs.
Good evening, members of the board, cabinet, and audience. Can I have Stuart Panthers and tutors come on up to join me as I explain a little about Stewart for the past few years? So avid was a pilot startup program in 2009, 2010, and I actually worked in curriculum instruction one floor below and watched this program blossom and start up. And in 2010, I was actually an avid teacher. So this is a huge passion deep down in my heart. And when I came to Stewart in 2014, Stewart was one of the pilot programs in 2010. And in 2014, when we were there, there were 10 sections serving 160 kids. We are now at 13 sections serving 207th grade, 207 sixth graders every single day, and 110 seventh and eighth graders every other day. During a student's time at Stewart, they experienced college visits at TCC, Evergreen, PLU, UWt, UW, and Central Washington. They benefit from over 30 guest speakers. They spend a week devoted to college and career while interacting with community members from the field. Stewart has doubled their math achievement scores since 2014 and is one of the many Title I middle schools in Washington State, making significant growth. But wait, we're not done yet. Lots of work to do. And here, I'd like to introduce some of my avid team that work with these students every single day, making a difference. We have Shannon Simzak, our avid coordinator, Kat Appleby, one of our avid teachers, Hillary Bridge, which was one of our avid teachers and is now teaching math this year. We have Kimmy Jean, that is working as a tutor and a sub in our school. And then we have Mr. Ziganfus, one of our assistant principal, who's also part of the avid program, Jessica Stella, who's our avid teacher, who is out coaching tonight, and then many several teachers that have taught the avid program over the last seven, eight years that have made an impact on kids, and four graduating classes so far that have come out of Stewart and many other middle schools in Tacoma that tell stories of amazing things that they're doing right now. So thank you for supporting this program and the curriculum instruction office for supporting this program.
Everybody, parents, teachers, family, you all matter.
You got enough, Josh? All right.
Congratulations. I'm going to have to kiss off you. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations.
I got to see you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
I will, I will. I got cross schools.
Hi, how are you?
I'll stop by. I will.
Thanks for coming. I will. Thank you very much.
My box is so big.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Exactly.
Thanks so much.
Yeah, really.
So I go back away.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you so much.
He's got a growth mindset.
Don't sit on my bottom mindset. No, that's what I like. Yeah, it's great.
On behalf of the board, thank you so much to all of you. You're what makes it matter for all the work that we do. And so again, our congratulations. And with that, we're gonna, I'm gonna stop, speak slowly so people can move out of the room that wish to. And it looks like we may have some comments from the board. Director Heinz?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to say, as, not only as a board member, is that very inspiring, but I appreciate, I'm a proud parent of an eighth grader at Mason Middle School and a fifth grader who will be there next year. So I just appreciate that dedication. It's paying dividends. It's making a difference in those kids' lives. And, and you can tell the passion they have for it. And I said to that father, how proud he must be of those two young men. But, but that's such a great example of why we make these sorts of investments, because they have real-world implications and they're changing lives. So, so appreciative of the, of the hard work.
Wonderful. Thank you. Are there any other comments from the board? Vice President Cobb?
Well, since Director Heinz is a proud parent, I want to say that I'm, I was doing the same thing over here. I'm a proud parent of a sixth grader at Stewart. And I've, just in his first two weeks of school, seen him come home, talking about avid, talking about all of his teachers. Ms. Stella was mentioned. He's been talking about Ms. Stella. So it's clear from the students who spoke and just from the educators who spoke, too, that everyone is committed and passionate about all of the work that we're doing. So it's just great to see, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Director Viall?
I just wanted to make the point that we have avid at other schools. Jason Lee, and I hear great stories from there and also at Truman. Very impactful program with our kids. And I think that, you know, when you talk to the kids, like they said, it really teaches them the importance of focusing, teaching them how to take notes, teaching them what the importance of learning is, getting that growth mindset, we call, and we used to call it, you know, not sitting on your backside, but getting going. And I think, you know, we have better buzzwords. One of my teachers used to say that all the time. You're not here to sit on your behind. You're here to, you're here to learn. And actually, it was a ninth-grade algebra teacher at Mason. So I don't have kids at Mason, but I am a proud old Mason Mustang. But anyway, I think that when we talked about doing this program and funding it a number of years ago, we, some of the comments were, well, it's expensive. But I think we see now that it's well worth the money that we have spent on it. You know, we've seen the results, evidence-based, data-driven, and we certainly have seen it in this program. So kudos to everyone, all of our staffs across the district that are engaged in this program.
Absolutely. Thank you. Are there any other comments?
I'll just make comment that it's really teacher-dependent. And we certainly saw, I knew many of those teachers who came up here, and they're very dedicated. They make it exciting for the students.
Fantastic. And just since the board spoke on their own behalf, I just have to say, seeing students that excited about math and calculus is a fantastic thing. If we could bottle that, we would, well, we're already leaders in urban education, so what's next? So, thank you very much. And next on the agenda is item number five point two, which is another recognition, this one of the district's finance department team for earning a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting.
Thank you, President Oshka and members of the board. Each year, the Government Finance Officers Association awards certificates of achievement to municipal organizations that demonstrate a high degree of financial accountability and transparency in financial reporting. This award doesn't happen by accident. It represents a significant achievement and reflects the district's commitment to fiscal integrity. And the honor wouldn't come to the district without the dedication of our finance team under the leadership of Finance Director Rob Bryant. Before I bring the team forward, though, you need to know one more thing. On Tuesday, we learned that the finance team won another honor for financial excellence and transparency in financial reporting. The Association of School Business Officials International has awarded public schools its certificate of excellence in financial reporting in its comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending in 2016. That goes to this team as well. Recognition through this program helps strengthen our district's presentation for bond issues financing. And not only that, these honors, both together, help us maintain that all-important public trust in our stewardship of the taxpayers' investment in our work. So there you have it. To introduce our double award-winning team, it's my pleasure to present the finance manager, Mary Ann Bigelow. Mary Ann?
Thank you. This is our Academy Award, and it would not be possible without a cast of thousands. And I'd like to recognize our staff. Stand up, ladies. So we have Robin Fox from our payroll department, Note Six, pensions. Thank you, Robin. Always accurate. We also had a Gatsby 68 audit on our pensions as part of our financial report. We passed with flying colors. They are spot-on accurate, and I always have utmost confidence in their work. Thank you. Next, we have Ginny Adams. Ginny works in our finance department as our grants technician. She brings in the money. And without Ginny's work, this cafer wouldn't be possible. Another piece of our cafer is that we have to have a clean audit opinion to receive this award. Ginny's work is audited so finely, and again, she passes with flying colors and does excellent work. Thank you. Natasha Edwards. Natasha is cash all the time. She balances to the penny, millions and millions of dollars. And again, audited very heavily. And she also helps prepare our financial statements. And thank you. Alice Shaw. Alice, again, is cash and investment, $600 million a year, in and out. She takes care of every penny, balances to every penny. Her work is audited very closely. And Alice prepared most of the statements and schedules in the cafer. She does excellent work, and thank you. Anne Cummings. Anne is our capital accountant. She does Note Four and Note Five, construction in progress, and the capital assets depreciation. We have over a billion dollars in assets. Anne keeps track of every one of them. She records them accurately. She depreciates them perfectly. She appreciates them, too. We all appreciate our assets, but Anne depreciates them. And again, does excellent work. Our audits are always spot-on with Anne's work. Thank you, Anne. And last but not least, Wanda Moore. Wanda's our lead accountant. Wanda, I think you've been here for 30?
Plus.
Plus. We can always depend on Wanda. Wanda manages our month-end, year-end close. She's also integral in preparing our statements and schedules. And again, her work is excellent. We could not have done this without Wanda. She keeps us all organized. Thank you. Thank you. And thank you for the recognition. We really appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please come forward. We'd love to shake your hand. Congratulations. Let me kiss on you. Congratulations. Thanks for all your hard work. Thank you for all your hard work. Gonna fist on you. Gonna fist on you. Sorry. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks for all your hard work. Gonna fist on you. Sorry.
Congratulations. Congratulations. I don't know how many of these you've been round for.
I know. I know. Awesome.
Thank you so much for your hard work once again. And that is the end of our recognition period for this evening's agenda, and we're moving on to item number six, which is a public hearing. First, six point one is a statement for the public hearing for the intent to sell Geodrome property. The district has determined that the Geodrome property, parcel number 211-0000-331, is a small 1.24 acre portion of the Geodrome Middle School campus and is located at South 49th Street and Interstate 5. This parcel is not needed for district purposes in the foreseeable future and will not be required for the district's long-range planning of capital facilities. I believe that statement was necessary to preface six point two, which is a public hearing to authorize the sale or lease of school district property. Tacoma School District Number 10 will hold a public hearing to take testimony regarding the potential sale or lease of 1.24 acres of real property at South 49th Street and Interstate 5, commonly known as the Geodrome property, parcel number 211-0000-331. And then are there any members of the public wishing to address the board in relationship to the sale of this property?
Not at this time.
Okay. So this is the property that we've discussed before that is just between the Geodrome and the I-5 block. What is it? The barrier for I-5, so. Okay. Seeing no, nobody interested in speaking in that regard, we are going to move on to item number seven, which is members of the public wishing to address the board. We, school board members, encourage your public's participation with us, and your input is always appreciated. If you'd like to address us, follow these steps. Please complete a citizen's request to speak card, which is located at the back of the room. Submit the card to the school board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Card submitted after the public comment period has ended for the meeting will not be considered during that session. The superintendent or their designee will call your name when it's your turn to address the school board. Please speak into the microphone, and you'll have up to three minutes to share your comments. We do have a timer up here. You'll get a warning at one minute, and then you'll get another beep when the three minutes is up.
First speaker tonight is speaking regarding sugarless schools, Amber Ellis. Hand it to the board secretary.
You can provide paperwork to the board secretary for distribution to the board.
Dear members of the board, my name is Amber Ellis, and I'm here to talk about sugarless schools, how I think there should be a lot less sugar in schools, and why I think that there is a lot of sugar in schools. So first, I really like avid, too. And I like people who can, you know, bring in money and take care of the money that schools have. And so that's why I say that we push threatening information away. We pull friendly information close. We apply flight, fight-or-flight reflexes, not only to predators, but to data itself. This is actually not, I didn't say this. It was Arthur, Arthur Lupia, a political scientist at University of Michigan. And why I bring that up is because the information I'm about to present is not as friendly as avid. And I, I love avid, really. It's great. So my question to the board is, do you guys want to be proactive or reactive? Tom, Tony Robbins has a quote out there about businesses and whether, when they're in the business of a business, how they need to look at their business now and their business in the future. And so this is really about your business in the future, the business of schools. The USDA 2015, 2020 dietary guidelines for Americans says that kids The USDA 2015-2020 Dietary Guidelines for Americans says that kids, children of school age, should have less than 10% of their daily calorie intake from sugar. The American Heart of Satiation says it's under 24 grams. They're the same thing, essentially, about 10%. They're about a 2,000-calorie diet. It's about around the same thing, same number. Added sugar has zero, zero nutrients. It is not necessary. I don't eat added sugar at all anywhere. Nobody in my family does, and we are in such great health. Actually, I've lost 70 pounds since I stopped eating sugar in 2015. The biggest problem, and this has just come out, and you have the scientific report on your desk, hopefully now, in September of 2016, it's been proven that... One minute. That kids get fatty liver disease from sugar. Obesity... Obesity is the number-one contributor... Number-one contributor of obesity is sugar, and obesity causes all these problems: hypertension, heart disease, and diabetes. Basically, A plus B equals C. So, if I have time, I want to talk about how I think that absolutely please, 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 non-food resorts for birthdays and for celebrations and rewards. For many reasons other than sugar, there's salt, and calorie intake is important, and kids don't need to be eating extra food just because. And for people like me that don't eat added sugar, when the schools constantly have it around our kids, it is really frustrating. Parents and PTA, they can sell fruit and veggies. They do not have to sell cupcakes. And for chocolate milk, I recommend water, beans, and broccoli. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh. I appreciate it.
Next this evening, the subject is back-to-school event, and this is Kimmy Irene Gin.
Good evening, Board of Directors and folks who are taking the time to be part of this evening's school board. First of all, I want to say, yes, I am, like, ecstatic about being a tutor at Stewart. I wasn't aware that that was going to happen tonight, but it's one of my greatest thrills to go to Stewart Middle School on Tuesdays with sixth graders and tutor the sixth graders. I'm in my third year of tutoring, and I'm very excited about that, so this was a real honor and a very much a surprise. But I'm not here for Stewart, per se. I'm here as the interim director of Vibrant Schools. And as you know, we are an organization that has a mission to eliminate disparities of students of color and those impacted by poverty here in Tacoma Public Schools. And we've decided this year to have a back-to-school event. I have left flyers with Tanya, your board secretary, to invite you to that event. It is our hope that we will continue to do this to support what you support, which is every student, every day. We're about making sure that all students are academically sound, successful, and that they're culturally and socially nurtured. And so, we thought that one of the ways that we could be of support this year and still be advocates for families and students in this school district, that we would launch a back-to-school event called... Are you ready for this? The Hip-Hop Sock-Hop Event at the People's Community Center on September 30th from 6:00 to 9:00. We have lots of fun to happen that night, and I'm challenging all of you to come out and do line dancing with the kids and the families and have some fun. Again, we have the flyers here, and it's our hope that this will set the tone of saying that at Vibrant Schools, we're about every student, every day, and we hope to see you on September 30th.
Thank you.
That is all the speakers this evening.
Okay. Thank you so much for your comments. That closes public comment for this evening, and we're moving on to item number eight, which is the superintendent's report. However, there doesn't appear to be one, correct?
Just real quickly, on behalf of the superintendent, just want to welcome everyone back. San Antonio wanted to make sure everyone understood that school is back in session. Buses are running, classes are full. Appreciate people's patience as people are learning new... Students are learning new bus routes. Staff are balancing out class sizes and making changes a la... But so far, a smooth start, reminding everyone that Arlington is a new building and open, and if you ever got a chance to swing by, please go out and see Arlington. There will be an official open house that's posted on the website. Great opportunity, getting a chance to see it the first day and just to see the students' reactions of, like, wow, amazing parents and stuff. And so, welcome everyone back, and we're excited. We're not resting. We have a lot of work to do, and the superintendent has made it clear we will continue to move forward and reach every child.
Fantastic. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. And before I ask for motion of approval, I just want to point out to the public and those that might be watching that there's a lot of things on the consent agenda, and we've all had a chance to look at them and do our homework beforehand and ask questions. They're, by and large, items that allow us to do the daily business of the board in terms of travel requests and making sure that paychecks get posted. So, that being said, I would like to entertain a motion for approval.
I move approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second. And are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor of the consent?
Oh, I do have a question.
Okay. Seeing some, Director Winskill?
Okay. So, I'm looking at the personnel items, and we have... The director of planning and construction has resigned, and then we've hired someone. But we've hired him to be in a different position, so he's not the director, but the executive director. So, tell me what that means.
So, Mr. Morris Aldridge will be supervising two departments, and so, in that situation, we didn't replace with another administrator, but we created a new role for Mr. Aldridge. And so, he'll be supervising both transportation as well as the planning and construction department.
Okay. That's a pretty big job there. And then, I saw that Michael Fletcher has moved up, so I thought he was going to do transportation.
Based on Mr. Aldridge having an expanded role, we have elevated Mr. Fletcher's role to take on more responsibility as well.
Okay. Thank you. Great. Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion passes, five-zero. Then scrolling as quickly as I can. Nine point... I'm sorry. Item number 10 is policy matters, and there are no policy matters this evening. Item number 11 is a quarterly financial update. Presentations on the financial health of the district will may be during our regular board meetings on a quarterly basis. Monthly financial statements can be found on the district website at tacomaschools.org/finance/pages/financial-reports. And there is none tonight, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Next is item number 12, which is curriculum and instruction, and there are no items there. Item number 13 is business matters. Thirteen point one is the approval of Early Childhood Education Assistance Program, known as ECAP, for the fiscal year 1718 continuation grant.
The deputy superintendent, on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, recommends the Board of Directors approve the Early Childhood Education and Assistance Program Continuation Grant in the amount of $1,182,462. Funding source: early learning.
I'll move approval.
Second.
The item's been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Seeing none, motion passes, five-zero. Item thirteen point two is the approval of the 1718 contract between Tacoma School District Number Ten and Safe Streets, a nonprofit charitable organization.
The deputy superintendent recommends that the Board of Directors approve the contract between the Tacoma School District Number Ten and Safe Streets Campaign for the period of September 1, 2017, through August 31, 2018, inclusive of the amount of $50,000.
I would move approval.
Second.
The item's been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Director Winskill?
I'm going to recuse myself. I think that's the appropriate thing to do since I'm on that board.
Appreciate it. Please note that for the record. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstaining?
Aye.
Motion passes, four, with one abstention.
Correct.
Thank you. Item number thirteen point three is the approval of Title I Part A Grant Application to OSPI.
The deputy superintendent, on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services, recommends the Board of Directors approve the submission of the Title I Part A Grant Application in the amount of $9,929,518 to the Office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction, and, if funded, approve expenditure of funds according to the appropriate guidelines. Funding source... Funding source: Title I funds.
I move approval.
I was going too fast.
Okay.
The item has been moved in seconded. Are there questions or comments from the board? Director Winskill?
Yeah, I just have a question, because we have Catholic schools that are listed. Do they take part of that nine-plus-million, or they don't get their own pot of money?
There's a designated amount that allows private schools to access funds, but it is a part of that nine million.
Yeah, I did know that, but I wasn't sure. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, five-zero. Item number thirteen point three, is that correct? I'm sorry. Thirteen point four is the approval of the Hilltop Artists and Residents in Tacoma Public Schools' three-year contract renewal.
The Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support recommends that the Board of Directors approve the three-year contract renewal between Hilltop Artists and Residents Tacoma and Tacoma Public Schools. The funding source should read, "Partially funded through CTE and partially funded through local levy dollars."
I'll move approval.
Second.
The item's been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? I have a quick comment. This is a program that's been going in Tacoma for a long period of time. It's very dynamic. It began under the leadership of renowned glass artist, Juhuli, and continues to be a driving force that occupies students with learning the art of using glass and blowing glass, which is tremendous. And so, it's a really cool program. If you haven't checked it out, you should. It's really cool. Anyway, that being said, if there's no other comments, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, five-zero. Item number fourteen is other business. Fourteen point one is the adoption of Resolution 2025, intent to sell the Geodrome property.
The chief operating officer recommends that the Board of Directors adopt and approve Resolution Number 2025, intent to sell Geodrome property.
Move approval.
Second.
The item's been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, five-oh. Next is item number fifteen. It's a report to the board, fifteen point one, early learning annual report.
So, as the staff transitions, I just want to remind folks at home, the board has identified our four strategic plans and then benchmarks under each one of those plans. In addition, we have priority benchmarks. So, what you'll see tonight is an annual report highlighting the priority benchmark. There'll be additional data that is also available in the appendix that we won't go over tonight, but is available in our monitoring reports that are also available online, as well as our district's data dashboard gives information and data on all of the benchmarks that are included. So, although we won't be speaking to all of the early learning tonight, I just want to remind folks that that data is available 24/7, 365 days a year for their review. With that, I'd like to introduce Assistant Superintendent Tony Pace and Marie Verhar, who will lead us through our early learning report.
You ready?
I'm ready.
Well, thank you, and good evening, President Ushka, Vice President Cobb, members of the board, and Deputy Superintendent Garcia. Tonight, it's the privilege of myself and Assistant Superintendent Verhar to be presenting the annual report for the early learning priority benchmark on the number of preschool students enrolled in our programs for 2016 to 2017. As a reminder, the mission of our early learning program is to support and serve our youngest learners socially and academically in an effort to prepare every student for kindergarten success. This slide shows the six preschool programs that have... Serve 69 classrooms across 34 locations. The table highlights the number of programs for each of the six programs.
All right. From 2016 to 2017, we see growth of approximately 87 students. This growth is typically due to an increase in enrollment in one or more of our programs. While we strive to be at full capacity at all times, this is not always the case, so each year, we work to fill those spots. As a reminder, the number of slots are fixed for all programs with exception of special education and the Montessori programs. If a student is special education eligible, we find an available program for the student. In April of 2017, we added a special education extended day program at Willard Early Learning Hub. We see with the increase of approximately 87 students in 2016-17, also an increase in the percentage of students in most of the subgroups. The demographic data of students enrolled mirrors our overall district enrollment, as noted in the gray column to the right of this chart. The demographic enrollment for 2016, last year's enrollment, is located in the appendix of this presentation for your information and reference. As Deputy Superintendent Garcia mentioned, as a reminder to all of those in the audience and those watching at home, all of our benchmark reports following the board meeting can always be found on the Tacoma Public Schools webpage, on the strategic plan page. Last year, we increased the number of full-day preschool programs that we offer in Tacoma Public Schools. In 2016, we had just one full-day program, which was located at Bryant, and in 2017, we have nine full-day programs located at different sites across the district. In two of the subgroups, Hispanic and multi, or two or more races, the preschool enrollment represents a higher percentage than the actual overall district enrollment. Some of our next steps. We continue to offer community recruitment events. Last year, we held them across the district, such locations as Willard, at high schools, as Asian Cultural Center. We've already held our first community preschool enrollment recruitment event on August 30th, with many more to follow. Last year, you'll remember, we submitted an RFP, a Request for Proposals, for Willard Early Learning Hub, and we did not receive any responses for the two open classrooms, so we will again be submitting an RFP in the coming weeks in hopes of finding community partners to share with us at Willard Early Learning Hub in the two open classrooms. We're working this year with our student information team to create a way to analyze the impact of Tacoma preschool students' participation on K3 student achievement. Part of our district assessment research team, we're working with them to see if we can come up with a way to add that to our dashboards to see if we can track better that achievement level. Lastly, we continue to expand our community partnerships with local preschools. You'll remember, last year, Children's Museum of Tacoma joined us at the Hoyt Early Learning Center, and they share a classroom at Hoyt. And this year, soon to start, just in a couple of weeks, the North Tacoma Co-op Preschool will also be joining at Hoyt, filling our other open classroom there, and we are excited to have them onboard and the partnerships that are created as a result. North Tacoma Co-op opens their doors on September 25th. Children's Museum, their first day is September 18th, and our preschoolers started yesterday. So, it's very exciting to continue these partnerships, and we look forward to finding partners for our Willard site. In your appendix, also, we've included a slide just to give you an idea of what the enrollment looks like in both of those community partner preschools as of date, up-to-date, that's their enrollment. That concludes our presentation this evening. What questions might we answer for you?
Director Verhar?
Thank you. This is more of a clarification. I know that Geiger has a... Geiger Montessori has a Head Start Montessori for our children whose families cannot afford the preschool, and I understand that has been very successful. I happened to be over at Geiger opening day of school, and every classroom at Geiger is full. And a lot of that is the neighborhood kids that had not been coming to Geiger, who have been in the preschool program, are now enrolled at Geiger at Montessori. And I also understand Bryant also has one. Is that correct? And I want to applaud Tracy for moving forward on that, because I thought that was a big hole in our preschool program. So, we actually have four Montessori preschools, if we kind of, you know, stretch that a little bit, but everybody that's been in that has... At Geiger, at least, has sung its praises, and I just want to say, you know, thank you for giving that opportunity to a lot of the kids, because it's almost kind of a rule, you had an unwritten one, to be in the preschool, to really be ready to go into the Montessori. And now, Geiger does have a very high poverty... And now, Geiger does have a very high poverty area behind the school that actually goes from behind that school way down, all the way down to Highway 16. So, and we have opened the doors to those kids, so our everyday, every student, every day. So, thank you. I think the numbers are amazing. And I don't know how we get the word out better, because the number of people, I've said, we have free preschool, you do. So if we can figure out, I don't know what, maybe some PSAs for, maybe Dan can think about that, getting them on, you know, some of the TV stations, you know, that if you're interested in your child in preschool, you can't afford it, Tacoma Public Schools offers. So, anyway, thank you and kudos, and I think the fact that we over, went over what our projections were very quickly, that this has now become, and I think as we engage in an argument with the state legislature, that preschool has now become basic education in Tacoma Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Heinz.
Well, that was the perfect segue, Director Biel. I appreciate, you know, it should not be lost that Tacoma, a number of years ago, was the first district statewide to offer free kindergarten. We've led the way on free preschool. But it's free to the recipient. There still is a cost associated on the part of the district. So I'm interested to know, how is it funded? And are there impacts because of the, and I'm going to use air quotes, "McClary fix", to these real-world programs that we know are being effective?
So our programs are, you actually approved a grant this evening for our E-CAP programs, I believe, last Board meeting. You approved a continuation grant for Head Start, so that's where primarily the funding from those programs comes from. Our special education preschool classrooms come from part funding, but also part basic ed, and so you're right, there are costs certainly to the district, and it's a priority for us. It is an early learning, it is a benchmark for us. And so part of, some of the cost comes from these continuation grants, but also some from basic ed.
And local levy dollars as well.
And local levy dollars.
And that was going to be my follow-up on local levy dollars. So I would piggyback on Director Biel's comments to suggest that as part of our 2018 state legislative agenda, we begin the conversation around preschool is, in fact, a part of basic education and all of the supports that make this possible, so teachers, paras, materials, that is a part of basic education. And for us to lead the way, but also look for other districts that may be of the same mindset, there's strength in numbers. I think that that would be a worthwhile issue for us to move forward.
Thank you. Other Board members' comments?
Director Wenskill. So these two classrooms that you'd like to rent at Willard, is there a cost for people to come in and rent the classrooms?
Yes, we do charge rent, and it is approximately $800 a month, which is a great price, actually. And not only do they have access to the classroom, but they also have access to other parts of the building. So some of the, the general meeting areas, the larger multipurpose areas as well. So we do charge an $800 a month rent as part of the RFP, the MOU in the contract.
Okay, and then the other suggestion I have for notifying people, pediatricians' offices, I think, might be very helpful to send out a notice to them and have them tell parents who have children of the correct age. I bet they would be very helpful in doing that.
That's a great point. You're very right, and we do canvas pediatrician offices. We, we work to get the word out, but we always are open to your suggestions and ideas for any other ways. Our community recruitment events have certainly been instrumental in helping us, but we're always looking for those little stones to turn over that will help us. The pediatricians' offices are wonderful, and our local pediatricians, if any of them are listening tonight, are, have been very supportive of us and willing to have our flyers and willing to talk up what we offer here in Tacoma.
Yeah, and community health. I imagine they know. Also, I want to say that my grandson was in one of those programs last year and thoroughly enjoyed it.
Vice President Cobb.
Can you say how far from being at capacity we are? One of the slides referenced our enrollment growth and framed it as programs growing towards capacity. How far are we from being at full capacity?
I'm turning to Director Ferguson to see if she might have an actual number for us tonight.
It doesn't have to be exact, I'm just.
Sixteen seventy-two is capacity.
So sixteen seventy-two is capacity. We are at?
Sixteen twenty.
Sixteen twenty.
Okay, that's, okay. And then my other question is about transportation with the programs being primarily half-day and like in times where working parents have to have places for their kids to be before and be after. To what extent are we engaged in transportation with any of these programs? Or do we partner with daycare providers on the transportation end? How is that?
Right, right now, just the E-CAP program offers transportation, so our families do provide transportation. And part of our reason for expanding the locations across the district to place them in schools that are easily accessible for our families, they don't have to travel far. Schools that are on bus lines and things of that sort, but at this point in time, E-CAP is the one school that provides transportation.
And as a follow-up, do you have any sense of?
Special education, I'm sorry, on special education.
Do you have any sense of how involved daycare providers are with getting some of the students who do go to daycare after to and from the preschool program?
So Director Ferguson says we also have daycare vans that do provide transportation to the locations. Again, we are so thankful to be able to have our programs in so many different locations across the district, because we want to place them where our families need most access and easy access. We know it's hard to drive across the district with children and schedules, so that's part of our goal as an early learning program, is to have them easily accessible for daycares, for families.
So I'm going to follow up on the sharing the good word questions. If I was in a multilingual community and I wanted to share that information in different languages, is there someplace I could find that online to distribute?
Yes.
Yes, we have it in.
I love that answer.
On our website and on our enrollment office for Head Start and E-CAP, we have multiple languages in our applications and getting information out, brochures.
Okay, I just want to restate what you, what you just said, so that the public hears as well. If people need information on multiple languages about our preschool programs, it is available on the website and on the E-CAP website, is that what you said?
If they call our enrollment office.
Call the enrollment office.
Call the enrollment office, and it can be made available. So we want to make sure that all communities in Tacoma have an opportunity to utilize this program and thrive from it. So thank you very much for everything that all of you do.
As well as at any of our early learning hubs. So we have Macarver Early Learning Hub, Willard Early Learning Hub, Hoyt Early Learning Hub. Parents can stop in, and we will make sure that we provide any kinds of resources that they need.
Did I miss one?
Madison.
Madison, Early Learning Hub, sorry.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Madam President?
Yes.
Just a few other things. We also have screening services available that rotate throughout the district. In 2012, when you made this your goal, one of your goals, our numbers, if you look at the numbers, were pretty flat. They were allowed 1,100. Since 2012, if you count our partnerships with the two other partners, which was a very intentional effort, we've increased enrollment by 50%, which is pretty significant, using local levy dollars, using combined categorical funds, and not having a model to replicate after. So the staff has worked very hard. You were very clear that you recognized and honored our partners inside the community that were really good at early learning. So our effort has not been to replace early learning, but to continue to expand and to offer opportunities and alternatives for those that may seek that opportunity. And why we continue to leave space in those early learning hubs is because we want to collaborate and learn with each other. And so those, the Hoyt model's been very successful. It's, it's new, when you have nonprofit and co-ops and public schools all coming together, but it's really fun to watch kids interact with each other and share resources and share ideas and learnings. So there isn't a magical number, although we have capacity with our teaching staff at sixteen seventy-two, a threshold that we're striving for. But we want to continue to think about, if there's a need and there's, to serve our community, we will continue to find ways to expand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments?
No, I have one more comment I want to make. So when I heard eight hundred dollars, you know, my, before we had preschool, some of our children went to private daycares, which actually are very inexpensive, because they don't have the certified teacher issue that we have, and sometimes like 2,500 for the year. So I'm wondering if eight hundred might be quite high for some of those private, those schools. I don't know how we arrive at that cost, but I would just leave that up to you to really determine that and see if that's too big of a percentage for them to pay.
Director Wenskill, the eight hundred dollars was in reference to what it cost the Children's Museum to use the facility a month?
Yeah, but I'm talking about other people. I'm talking about.
Right, so that, we, we have to base that number off of analysis about what is the market per square footage. Otherwise, it's a gift to public funds, and so we don't set that arbitrarily. We have folks that work with us to establish that number based on the market conditions that allow that. Sometimes we're able to work with different partners based on what services they're able to bring to the service or to the program as well, and that is somewhat flexible. So eight hundred is not a solid, let me rephrase that, is not a number that is fixed.
That's the one phrase. If I might make a comment as well, that, I assume, includes all utilities, janitorial services, parking, bathrooms, kitchen, et cetera, so those are all things that they're not paying on top of that, which ends up being.
Pretty cheap.
Use of the playground, use of the multipurpose rooms, the kitchen, all of the various resources on the site of the building.
So imagine that in relationship to fair market value, which we must follow as a state agency. That seems like a good number for that group.
Well, if we don't, if you have empty space and they're not taking advantage of it, I think we need to reassess, I mean, at some point and say, maybe.
I don't think that even if we have empty space, that the law allows us to provide items at less than market value, even if we wish to. But that would be a great opportunity for us to continue to innovate and look for partners who would contribute to that, to that number, so that we could allow for more access. Vice President Cobb.
Can I make one more comment on a different topic, but related? I just think that, I know that there are more families out there who want their kids to enroll in preschool, but not every family wants their child to enroll in preschool. So as we continue to partner, I would just be really interested to know, and maybe this is information you already have with, because you have relationships, of those preschool, of the daycare providers who have vans that take kids to preschool, are there children in the same age range who are not coming to preschool, and what are the reasons why? And if they aren't coming and it's family choice, we understand that, are you already partnering with the preschool, with the daycare programs to provide them with information about like the early literacy pathways or early numeracy and stuff? Just so that even if kids aren't showing up in our preschool places, that some of the providers and the adults working with them have access to information that it can help their, support their development.
We participate in a collaborative that's part of the Foundation for Tacoma Students around early learning that allows some of that to happen. And then we host professional development at our early learning centers and invite, you hit it spot on, sometimes it's just a family choice. We want to honor family choice, but we're continuing to look at how we're sharing and as well as how we're learning. And so we're not here to say, the Tacoma Public Schools, this is the only model to do it. We have several different models, but we're studying together to say, how do we improve early learning across the city?
Thanks.
Great. Other questions or comments from the Board? Thank you very much for your report and for all the work that you do. It's absolutely changing lives. Thank you. Next on the agenda is item number sixteen, which is Board Comments and Reports. I'm going to be in tonight with Vice President Cobb.
Well, my comment tonight is personal. We have a student who just started sixth grade, and I know we've already talked about Stuart tonight, but I just want to applaud the work that the school is doing, because I saw something for the first time with his start. He was checking his email, and he had a survey that he needed to fill out. And so just to know that, and he knew, all my teachers are going to have access to this, so for it to start off with, tell us two things, two words to describe yourself, and then asking about how he felt about, was he good at math, good at reading, good at writing, and did he like all those things, and what's three things we should know about you, and just, and just to get a sense of who our kids are. So as we're starting the school year, the teachers have a sense of who's coming to them. So I just appreciate that we are not only thinking strategy, but just at the very practical and student level, how do we engage our students? And I think that was a great example of thoughtful effort to engage all kids from the beginning of the school year. So I just want to applaud whoever's idea that was, and the fact that it's embedded in our data system, all of that, so I just think it was great. So appreciate the work that everyone's doing.
Thank you. Director Wenskill.
So people from Brown's Point are still concerned about their school, and they couldn't come tonight because it's back-to-school night for them. But they are going to come to the next meeting. So I don't know where we are on the design portion and whether it's going to be designed with these two extra classrooms in mind. And I, I don't know when we're going to be looking at our capital bond issue. Since all the costs are going up, and I really am concerned about cutting back on some of our buildings and not having quality like we have had. So I think that's a discussion we need to have, the sooner the better, about the long-term goals of that bond issue. So is there, what's happening, I mean, where are we in Brown's Point? I know we let a contract for grounds last time for about four million, but as far as the design, is that finished?
Yeah, the Board made a decision to list those as an alternative. And so if the Board has an opportunity to, once the bid comes in, and including the two additional classrooms as alternatives, and they will be able to make a decision based on the total bid package at that point.
Okay. And when, when do you think that will happen?
So I just wanted to provide a quick update. We will be updating the Board in the next couple of weeks. We sent out some preliminary information last Friday, but you will have an update and presentation in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I also want to remind the Board that I will be at the Legislative Assembly next week. I could bring up the preschool issue there to all the group, the group of people, especially the Pierce County people.
Thank you. Director Heinz.
Thank you. Last Friday, we had an event at Lowell. It was the unveiling of the beacons that's come out of the School Traffic Safety Committee's work. So that's a collaborative effort between the City of Tacoma and the school district. Councilmember Toms and I are the elected members that serve on that committee. And under his leadership, he was able to put money into the city budget for 14 sites. So we had the unveiling at Lowell, but the plan going forward is to have the same sort of ceremony at each of the 13 sites, the additional sites to highlight the infrastructure. What I've learned through this process is the three Es, engineering, education, and enforcement. So we have, through the engineering piece, beacons in place. That's the impetus then for the education piece, and I appreciate Dan Vopel and his team. We're on-site. They shot some video. We've talked about doing some innovative social media marketing to make people in the community aware. So not everybody has school, has children that live in that area where these beacons are going, so trying to correct, connect directly with them to remind them of safe driving habits. And then the enforcement, I've heard through the City of Tacoma that they are going to increase their presence of patrol. They're going to start writing tickets. And so it's important for people to understand, this is not write tickets to create revenue for the general fund. It's to write tickets as a way to hopefully modify dangerous behavior. And we know simply reducing speed by five miles an hour can be the difference between a young person living or dying or having serious injuries. So this is the foreshadow of where we're going with this sort of citywide. We've already started conversations about perhaps the city needs to create an ordinance that regulates what sort of infrastructure needs to be put in place, and not just around schools, because it's not just a school-related issue, but where kids and families gather. So parks and community centers, and understanding that for us, when we manage projects, understanding those sorts of costs on the front end versus trying to come up with the money. We thankfully were able, through the City Council, to find money for these 14. But if we know as we're building buildings and as our partners at parks are building buildings, and our partners at Boys and Girls Clubs are building buildings, what that expectation is through an ordinance, that we can plan for the engineering side to go into the projects. And then we also, at the committee level, have been talking about a camera program. So the mortar units go out and write tickets, but they can't be everywhere at the same time. They need to move. But cameras are constant, and the idea is to look at examples of programs where the camera revenue supports a school safety zone program. So it would be earmarked to support the engineering, the education, and the enforcement costs associated with creating the safe zone. So it's, I think we've been talking about this for almost four years. It was gratifying to see it come to fruition. King Five was. it come to fruition. King Five was there, so we got some good media coverage as well. But stay tuned. There's more exciting things to come, and it is citywide. So the, the city has good engineering data. It's data-driven as to where these beacons are going to be placed.
Thank you. Director Viall?
Thank you. I also want to give Mayor Strickland a little bit of a shout-out on the traffic safety thing. And she's the one that got it up on the agenda after the four of us met, if you remember, a couple of years ago. And I know this has been a big thing for her in terms of safe walking, you know, to, to school. And a lot of our kids in our neighborhoods do walk to school, and they have to. When the schools were, a lot of, when the schools were built, were not major arterials, which are now. So I think this, you know, the more we can get those beacons out, because I'm always slowing down, and I'm sure people do not appreciate that on twelve when I get by DeLong, you know, and I have honked the horn at a couple that have gone by, you know, zipping through there because that is, they don't realize that school sits back up there. And as I said, that was a horrible tragedy a few years ago there where a child was killed, and he actually had the light there and that. So that's one that I'm hoping is going to be on the list for, for beacons as they come down the hill. Could we get a list of where those are going?
Yeah, and in fact...
I would appreciate that.
As I'm sitting here, perhaps a presentation?
That would be good.
Of the city come and talk to us about the good work that's occurring?
That would be great. Yeah, that would be great. I think so. All right. I was, I have been, being the ledge rep with Mr. Brown and the legislature, the legislature, the Office of Financial Management, OSBR is still trying to figure out what the base numbers are and what's funded and what isn't. And so we're kind of in, in limbo about where we are. Questions still need to be asked is, what's included in the salaries in that figure? What are they funding? What aren't they funding? Because if you go back and read some of the things that are in there, they're now saying enrichment, which will be our levy, can fund certain salary. So I guess right now, we really do not have a clear picture on how much money we're going to get or how much money we are going to. And to me, that's pretty sad. And one other thing is, I guess when the Attorney General filed his, saying that the legislature had satisfied McCleary, he refuted our comment that we would be better off without what the legislature has included. And we're going to put some numbers together, and I know that, probably have talked with Renee already about getting us into the lawsuit that will be filed and our numbers before the court that McCleary has not funded. And I will tell you quite frankly, with my background in, in budget, going way back to school funding issues in the mid-seventies when I was the number-two person in the state budget office, this is the first time that I have ever seen this, where there is no agreement on where the numbers are, what the baseline is, and where we are. And I would hope that the politics get put aside, and somebody, I know Rosalyn has been involved, and she's putting together the numbers. And I quite frankly trust our numbers more than I would trust those coming out of the state at this point. So, and I think that's the point, that they know in Olympia that our numbers here at the district showing what we are are real, the ones in Olympia right now or not.
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
Is there any commitment to a timeline or an ETA for Olympia to resolve this, or have they just left this until they finish?
No, they're, they're having meetings on top of meetings, and they're trying to figure this out as to what, what's in there, and it's more questions. I did see a list of the questions that they're trying to resolve, and all it did was raise more questions. And Charlie laughed when I wrote, sent back, and I said, "More questions." So the, the bottom line is, is that I don't think during, and this is my speculation, just having been around that, that arena for a very long time, both in, in different capacities, is that they did not agree, they meaning all of the partners, OFM and everyone, during the final negotiations as to really what was included numerically in each one of those categories. And so OSBI thinks the numbers are lower. The legislature thinks the numbers are higher. And at this point in time, they probably need an arbiter almost to say, "Hey, time out. Let's get to a baseline that we all agree on, because we're not the only schoolers." I mean, Seattle, you know, everyone is in the same boat. So that's, that's where that is, but they better hurry up.
Yep.
And I suspect the one issue also is the dollar fifty per, for assessed valuation. They need to really take a look at that. For a small school district, it works. For big ones like us and like Washington and Bellevue, who have had large, you know, levy caps, it doesn't. So the, the thinking is if salary things are included, and that's a can of worms right now, that the, going to the twenty-five thousand per student per levy would probably get us the ability to fund what we are now. But if the salary stuff isn't included, then we're right back, you know, trying, we'll, we'll be, you know, hard-pressed to do what we're doing.
Mm-hmm.
And that's why I applaud our budget office for this last few months. We have saved money in salaries. We have, you know, we, as I used to say, have really tightened the calculators down so that we are really cognizant of what we're doing, and we don't win these awards for not being good at what we do. Anyway, that's, I'm sorry to be gloom and doom. I do have one shout-out for Truman. A young family moved in our neighborhood with four young kids. Three of them are Geiger age, and the oldest child, mom talked to me, they actually live across the street, and she said, "I'm really concerned because our oldest went to private school and they skipped him a grade. And he is small," and she said, "He didn't have any friends when he went back to public school, a different school district last year." And she said, "I, I'm really concerned about him not, you know, being socially and emotionally aware of what, where he is." And I said, "Well, when you go over to Truman to enroll him, because we are in the Truman neighborhood till Hunt is rebuilt." And when they over to Truman, they sat down, they said, "Okay." And she said, "Maybe he needs to be held back a year." And I said, "No, not with his academics." So what they did is they enrolled him where he should be in the seventh grade for the academic core courses, and his electives are with sixth graders, his age group. And he has come home so happy, and I just want to say, thank you, Andre Stroud and your stout, and your staff for understanding what Whole Child Initiatives is, is all about. And I thought, you know, what a, what a great idea. And so anyway, shout-out to Truman for, for going the extra mile to make sure that this child is going to be with his peer group, and he has made friends already. And she was, she was really pleased. And she said, "Wow, Tacoma schools are pretty cool." And she's got three at Geiger. And so, you know, we're getting new families moving into the city and the Whole Child. And anyway, just a great shout-out to Truman for going that extra mile.
Thank you, Director Viall.
You're welcome.
I want to say that as the year began, I had an opportunity with Superintendent Soterno to be on top of the Central Administration Building and ring the bell, welcoming in the school year, which is a fun tradition. You know, the message, of course, is have a great year and for all of our staff to, that work so hard to take care of yourselves as well. We need you, and you're important to us, as we take care of every student every day. So from, on behalf of the board, you know, welcome to the new year. This is the first school board meeting of the year, which seems like it's jumped up on us. Seems like we just closed out the last school year moments ago. And here we are off again. So I just want to give a shout-out to everybody that's made the opening weeks of class outstanding. There's a lot of hard work and organization to try and make everything work with new students coming in and everything else, and you've done a great job, and we value that. That being said, there are sports being played all over the district, so I want to encourage people, I'm going to channel Director Heinz, who's usually the person to say these things, to go cheer on our local teams. It makes a difference in our neighborhoods whether you have a kid in school or not. It's some of the best sports that you'll see, and you won't see more passionate, you won't see athletes with the kind of passion and the NFL that you're going to see on the fields of the Tacoma School District. Another thing that I want to mention is the Community Center, East Side Community Center groundbreaking is coming up really quickly. It's very exciting. Ground has been moved. Foundations are being poured. You can see the shape, the shape of where the pool's going to be, and I might have said that before, and you'll probably hear me say it many times again. It's a game-changing partnership that I hope that all of you have a chance to attend. It is open to the public, and it should be a great day. It is a Saturday to make sure that there's greater access. There is going to be a public survey on the naming of that center, so keep your eye out on, out for it. And I'll keep an eye as well. I want to give a big shout-out to Director Heinz and the City of Tacoma for their work on that beacon project. There's a number of those projects that will be in District Four, and Blix is among them. And I bring that up because I've talked about Blix, I think, the last two or three consecutive meetings. And that community is, as we were sitting here, I was added to a Blix community Facebook group, so I'll let you know how they feel about it. Again, it's going to be a game-changer in the, the lives of that community. So it's important work, and we look forward to the City of Tacoma continuing to partner throughout the district so that it's at every school if we have the opportunity. That being said, I do want to make note that because there's so much construction on East Forty-Eighth and the arterials that go over to Thirty-Eighth Street, I drive that way to work during, back and forth during school hours, and it's actually pretty darn chaotic, several blocks up from the school even. So I don't know if there's a way for us to keep an extra eye or post extra people. It would take one car not paying attention crossing Thirty-Eighth Street quickly, which is kind of what you have to do to cross it, to cause some tremendous tragedy. And the beacons aren't there yet. They're still in progress. I think that that is all I have to say besides, you know, again, hurrah, let's go seventeen-eighteen. And with that, I'm going to end my comments and move on to item number seventeen, which is the announcement of our future board meetings. We'll have a board meeting on Thursday, September twenty-first, which is a study session on the Oakland Health Center and the two thousand seventeen-eighteen levy renewal. We'll have a regular business meeting on Thursday, September twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen, six p.m. right here in this room. And at this time, we are going to move on to number eighteen. We are going to have a executive session tonight, and the official verbiage is that the Board of Directors will meet in executive session for approximately fifteen minutes to discuss with legal counsel litigation or potential litigation, to which the district or is likely to become a party when public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in adverse legal or financial consequences to the agency in accordance with RCW four-two dot three-zero dot one-one-zero. So with that, we will move to executive session. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.